The City Council of the City of Gunbarrel City will meet in a regular meeting in City Hall located at 1716 West Main Street, Gunbarrel City, Texas on Tuesday, April 27th at 6:30 PM. Roll call from my left, please.
Yaws, here.
Evans, here.
Mullins, here.
Rankin, here.
We have a quorum. If you would, please stand for the invocation. Dear Lord, we thank you for the many and abundant blessings that you have given us. Thank you for life itself and the measure of health we need to fulfill our callings. We ask that you would graciously grant us wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times. It is in your most blessed name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Citizens' comments. The purpose of this item is to allow citizens an opportunity to address the city council on items that are listed on the agenda or issues that are not listed on the agenda. Any person desiring to make a public comment must first be recognized by the presiding officer and sign at the podium with their name and address at least 10 minutes prior to the start of the meeting. Individual citizens' comments are limited to three minutes. The presiding officer may ask the citizen to hold their comment on an agenda item until the agenda item is reached. The city council has no obligation to respond in any manner to comments or questions from the public. Any response from a member of the city council to non-agenda comments is limited to a statement of specific factual information, a recital of existing policy, or direction to staff for follow-up. Okay. Ms. Kathy Nelling. Should you go to the podium, please?
I am so short. Okay, my name is Kathy Nelling and I live at 140 Evergreen Drive, Gunbarrel City, Texas. Do you know, I hesitate even coming to do this, but I got a phone call today and why people call me, I don't know. I think they think I still work for the newspaper, but I don't. I retired, so I don't work for the paper anymore. But I got a call today from a gentleman I've known for quite a while, and I trust what he says, but he was talking for somebody else. So let me tell you upfront, the person that made this complaint to me did not call me. It was one of his customers who called me. But there's a business down here that has tried to open up in Gunbarrel, and they've been waiting a year, they've been paying for their lease in Gunbarrel, and still they said they're just getting the runaround in Gunbarrel. So when I questioned, have they done everything that they were asked to do, they said they were at a standstill. I don't even know what that means. So I said, was it the city that's stopping them, or was it the EDC stopping them, or who's stopping them from opening up? They told me the fire marshal. Well, I talked to the fire marshal because I'm really good friends with him, and he's never even talked to this gentleman, the gentleman making the complaint. He's never had one conversation with him. So I don't know where the misunderstanding is coming from, but my problem is that the person who called me does not live in Gunbarrel. They live over in the Kemp area or something. And if we're getting a reputation that we're hard to deal with, because I will tell you that when I was running for council, I got a lot of those complaints from people. I had one business in Maybank that told me they wanted to open up here on 334, but Gunbarrel was so difficult to deal with that he went to Maybank. Maybank didn't offer him anything more than Gunbarrel did, but they were just so much nicer, like they really wanted him there. And I don't know where the problem is. I'm just repeating this because this guy called me thinking I could help him. I can't help him. I can't do anything for him. He needs to, the owner needs to get with the fire marshal and work this out, and that's what the fire marshal wants to do. But he doesn't even know how, you know, this guy's name or anything like that. He doesn't know anything about this guy. He does know about the business. He does know about the business, but he doesn't know anything about this guy. I know you can't comment on it or anything like that, but then I could have called each one of y'all individually, but this was just easier for me to do, to come and do it all at one time, because it has nothing to do, the fire marshal has nothing to do with this, evidently. I don't know where the communication stopped at with this man, but maybe he doesn't have the money to do the things he has to do. I don't know, because he was not the person that called me. It was one of his customers that called me. So, okay, and if, after the meeting's over with, if anybody wants to know the name of the business, I will tell you. I just don't think it's fair to blurt the name out here when he was not the person who called me. He did not make the complaint to me. It was one of his customers who did. But I am more willing to give his name if anybody wants to know after the meeting. Thank you.
Yes, my name's Scott Gallagher. I live at 108 Wild Grove Drive in Gunbarrel City, Texas, and I am here to do a, first of all, I appreciate your all's service and dedication to this city and this country. And I am here to do a legal serving. Pursuant to 18 U.S.C. 4 and 18 U.S.C. 23A2, we are hereby serving you legal notice of felonies that have been committed that you are required to acknowledge. If you fail or refuse to, your act of omission will be construed as aiding and abetting these crimes, and you will be considered a party in these crimes and stripped of your authority or office, and the material will be sent to the federal court for prosecution. Again, you have been given legal notice. We will expect a notice and report by your, describing your response within a week. Failure to do this will result in a criminal and civil legal action against you in your personal and corporate capacities. Have a nice day. And so what I have is, I have a flash drive with a 236-page PDF file from a gentleman that has worked closely with Lynn Wood and Sidney Powell, as well as a video that just came out that Mike Lindell put together explaining the voter fraud of the election in detail. Who shall I give this to in the flash drive? I will just give it to you, then.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher.
My name is Joe Lawrence. I live in Gunbarrel City, and I am the current Economic Development Corporation Board President. I was out of town for the last council meeting, but the statement was made when I reviewed the recording that some members of the council had never seen the revised bylaws. I'd like to summarize the timeline. The EDC board approved the revised bylaws on January 12th with a motion that was accepted and passed to be presented to the attorney and to city council. The executive director sent those bylaws that were approved by the board to the attorney. He has since billed the EDC over $1,500 to date for bylaw review. By January 25th, I had emailed the revised bylaws to the council, the city secretary, the mayor, et cetera. Shortly thereafter, Mr. Foster, head of the bylaw review committee, hand-delivered printed copies of these bylaws to the city secretary for distribution to the council. Not sure what happened, why the printed copies nor the emails failed to get to some people, but can't address that. I repeatedly requested attorney review status updates from the Economic Development Corporation executive director and was repeatedly told that the attorney was still working on them. My final request for updates, in mid-March, again received the response that the attorney was still working on them. I contacted the attorney directly in mid-April and was told he'd completed his work almost two months prior. He sent his review dated February 21st to the executive director. I requested and received those comments from him and distributed them to the bylaw review committee. The bylaw review committee agreed that the attorney's changes and comments were acceptable. Many of the board are extremely disappointed that the attorney comments were held almost two months. Many feel that this board has been misled, given incorrect or conflicting information, and stonewalled by a few to prevent these bylaws from being presented to council. I want to publicly thank the bylaw review committee for all the hard work they put into this. We trust that these approved 2021 bylaws will finally be considered for approval as submitted. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Joe Kyle. I'm a resident of Gunbarrel City and a board member of the Economic Development Corporation. I want to read to you a motion that was made on the 22nd of this month at the EDC board meeting and passed unanimously. The budget format needs to be changed to be more transparent following our treasurer spreadsheet that parallels the profit and loss statement and would list each individual type project, grant, and/or loan program, whether being funded or not at this time. The new amended budget will only be considered funding the 10 known overspent categories, which are estimated at around $40,000, so that we can pay our bills through the rest of this fiscal year. We also put Ms. Cooper on notice that there would be no more communication with any attorney unless the request was in writing and approved by the president and two other corporate executive officers stating the emergency purpose, as well as specific need and anticipated charges, are presented and approved by the board of directors as an agenda item. The third part, this in essence suspends all new, non-budgeted spending not currently found on the original 2020-2021 budget for the rest of this fiscal year, which ends in September of 2021. We do reserve the right to have Ms. Cooper present an individual expense and/or project at a board meeting, creating a specific additional amended budget proposal using the P&amp;L spreadsheet for each of them. With that, I'm going to list a few concerns. We have had statements from Ms. Cooper currently that she's still working with the EDC attorney on bylaws. She has said that he is in the process of creating a partnership agreement and that we have over $3,000 in legal fees to pay for the past month. On tonight's agenda, there's listed a new EDC website that does not have any monies budgeted to pay for it and seems to have a lot of charges our board was not presented during the meeting last week. Thank you very much.
Good evening, council and community members. I'm really not sure where I should begin. First, I have Mr. Lawrence, so I will begin with him. His version of how I am doing things here is not only out of line, but totally incorrect. When the bylaws were presented, I believe it was Mr. Lawrence who talked about bylaws, wasn't it? I've lost track. Joe? Lawrence?
Yes, ma'am.
May I ask you?
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
Was yours the bylaws and his the budget amendment, or?
That's correct, Ms. Cooper.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I am so constantly verbally attacked by these people that I kind of lose track of who is saying what. All right. Mr. Lawrence, the bylaws, when I last spoke with the attorney, and I believe he copied you on this, after all of what you have said, he sent me an email and said, "Sorry, Gail, I think I dropped the ball on this." I don't have it in front of me, but I can certainly supply it, and Joe, I think you were copied. I realize now that there were other corrections to be made. Okay. The truth is, I finally said to the attorney, "Just give up on the bylaws. There are too many other things to do. We are trying to perform economic development." So he let it go with all of the, all of the extra superficial, unnecessary wording that you had put into the bylaws. He let it go at that.
One minute left, Ms. Cooper.
Sorry?
One minute left.
Okay. That's the bylaws. The attorney dropped the ball. I apologize. He gave up. Joe Kyle, the budget amendment, for all of you who are aware, what they did was essentially cut off funding for any more projects right now. We have three Main Street projects. You know how good Main Street is looking now as a result of these wonderful programs. They are not being funded, and I have a call into the Attorney General, because yes, they do have to approve projects, but do they have the right to simply blanket, deny them all without ever seeing them? I am dealing with a very difficult board. I'm a certified economic developer. I have a master's degree in global technology and development. I have 25 years of experience.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper.
Thank you.
Item one, consent agenda. All matters listed under consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Consider approving the following reports. City manager report, previous meeting minutes, March financials, animal control and court report, police dispatch and fire, parks and street department, permits, inspections, and code enforcement, EDC March minutes, EDC April minutes, EDC February financials. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Vote from my left, please.
Yaws, yes.
Evans, yes.
Mullins, yes.
Rankin, yes.
Thank you. New business, item 2A, discuss and/or take action to approve the annual fiscal report for the fiscal year ending September 30, 2020. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the annual financial report for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2020.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion?
I can say that I read it thoroughly. We're in certainly good shape, and the few questions I did have, Mickey was able to answer for us, and they made logical sense, of course. I'm not surprised. So I'm very pleased.
Good.
I'd like to ask our city manager if he can just give us a brief recap for the public as to the contents of the report, just a quick overview.
Thank you.
High level.
I think what the audit report shows and the citizens of Gunbarrel City should feel comfortable with is that the city is managing its finances very well. We have a relatively substantial reserve fund, which is really needed for our current economic conditions, whereas we rely almost solely on sales tax revenue, which can be dependent on the economy. The report indicates that we are performing all financial matters within acceptable industry standards and legal norms, and that we are very, very well off at this point, especially after suffering through a pandemic for the last 12 months. The report indicated that over the previous calendar year, the city saw an increase of about 11.4% in sales tax revenue, which is really quite substantial considering the economic troubles that most people went through during the last year. So I think the report, again, clearly indicates to the citizens that we are doing due diligence with our finances, and we're spending the money that is being provided to the city in a responsible and accountable manner.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? Vote from my left, please.
Yaws, yes.
Evans, yes.
Mullins, yes.
Rankin, yes.
Thank you. Item 2B, discuss and/or take action to adopt ordinance number O 2021-010, adopting the 29th supplement to the Code of Ordinances as published by American Legal Publishing Company. Ordinance number O 2021-010, an ordinance enacting and adopting a supplement to the Code of Ordinances for the City of Gunbarrel City, Texas, and declaring an emergency. Mr. City Manager, well, let's see, can I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to, I'm sorry, to discuss and to take action, consider adopting a supplement to the Code of Ordinances for the City of Gunbarrel City, Texas, declaring an emergency.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Mr. City Manager, would you like to discuss this?
This ordinance just enacts and adopts the supplement, the Code of Ordinances. Every time city council adopts or makes amendments to an ordinance, those are required to be changed in the actual listing of ordinances that you can find on our website. So every time we make changes, we are legally obligated to make sure those changes are made part of the public record, and our city secretary does that. Every time city council makes a decision, we forward those to the company, and then they make sure that those updates are made, so that people that are relying on the ordinances are relying on the most current and accurate information when dealing with the city in many different ways.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Vote from my left, please.
Yaws, yes.
Evans, yes.
Mullins, yes.
Rankin, yes.
Item 2C, discuss and/or take action to adopt resolution number R 2021-009, approving the Henderson County Hazardous Mitigation Action Plan. Resolution R 2021-009, approval of Hazard Mitigation Action Plan. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution R-2021-009, approving the Henderson County Hazard Mitigation Action Plan.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. City manager?
Gunbarrel City participated in the development of this mitigation plan, hazard mitigation plan, with the Henderson County. All cities in the county met multiple times with county emergency management program to come up with a mitigation plan that would apply to all cities. What this does is, this does not require us as a city to have our own mitigation plan. It's a very comprehensive document. In order for us to be compensated and reimbursed for expenses in the time of emergency, there must be a plan in place that deals with the mitigation, recovery, and response to emergencies. By approving and joining the county's mitigation plan, it puts all cities in the county on the same consistent foundation. So in the event that there is an emergency, such as our ice storm or even the global pandemic, all cities in the county are operating under the same guidelines. It establishes, the county judge is the emergency management director of the county, and establishes each responsible party in each city and what those responsibilities are. The big part of all of this is being reimbursed by the federal government. The federal government requires that all cities participate in some type of hazard mitigation plan. By agreeing and signing and joining the counties, it fulfills that requirement.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Vote from my left, please.
Yaws, yes.
Evans, yes.
Mullins, yes.
Rankin, yes.
Item 2D, discuss and/or take action to give formal approval to the Gunbarrel City Beautification Committee to plant a tree and install a bench at the city park in honor of COVID-19 victims, essential workers, and first responders, and consider contribution towards memorial. Mr. City Manager?
I met with members of the beautification committee a couple of weeks ago, and they asked if, first of all, permission to put a bench and a tree, plant a tree in remembrance of Gunbarrel City residents who had been affected by COVID-19, as well as for first responders and public safety. I agreed that that was a really good idea. You know, having a tree and a bench in the park is, anytime we can add to our park, I think it's a good idea. Members of the beautification committee assured me that they had the resources necessary to fulfill this project on their own, but asked if city council or the City of Gunbarrel City would like to participate in that project, and I told them that we'd put it on the agenda and get some feedback from the city council.
Thank you. Could I have a motion, council, on this item?
I'll make a motion to take action to give formal approval to the Gunbarrel City Beautification Committee to plant a tree and install a bench at the city park in honor of COVID-19 victims, essential workers, first responders, and consider contribution towards the memorial.
Second.
Motion and a second. Counselors, discussion?
I'd like to say thank you to the beautification committee for all the work y'all do year-round, and I think this is just a wonderful addition to all the work y'all have done so far. I think this will be a great project for the city. Thank you for what y'all have done with it so far and bringing it to us.
I think this is a wonderful thing and a great idea. I would caution you to make certain that the bench and any construction that is installed meets all of the ADA and the Texas requirements for accessibility. In the past, we've been faced with some things that had to be corrected or remedied, and it cost the city some money. So just make sure that it's done correctly, but it's a wonderful idea, and I applaud y'all for doing this.
Any further discussion?
Well, do we have a contribution, or do we have the money, or?
Yep. That's what I was waiting for somebody to ask about.
Okay. Do we have any money? I don't know if we have any.
There wasn't an amount in the motion.
You mind going to the microphone? Would you mind going to the microphone? Ms. Evans asked about contribution. What level of contribution are y'all looking for, or are we y'all?
The beautification committee can handle the whole project itself. All we're asking is, if you are interested in donating anything to our project, fine, but we would also like very much for you to participate at the end of our project when we have a newspaper man there, and we do a ceremony, and we do have a plaque that we will be putting there. So I'm inviting the city to join us in that.
Okay. Thank you very much, and I thank y'all for what y'all are doing. As Richard said, y'all are always doing a great job for our city, and it is much appreciated.
Can I just add? Our beautification committee has been working over the past two weeks in revising our butterfly garden, and they've removed trees, they've replanted, and they're going to have a very, very beautiful area. So thank you, guys, for all you've done.
There was a question.
I will be glad to amend my motion, but since I'm in the beautification committee...
If you want to put a contribution in on it.
I didn't feel I should.
Okay.
If y'all want to do anything, just let me know. I'll add it.
I'm leaving it up to council to decide that, so.
Putting you on the spot, that's what we're doing.
Ms. Mullins, could we maybe ask of you to help us with the wording?
With the what now?
Could we ask the favor of you maybe to help us with the wording of this amended motion?
But how much money?
Yeah.
Five hundred or?
That's pretty real spot, Ms. Mullins. Yeah.
I wish I knew what a good amount would be.
Well, on page two of our handout, I see that you have a dollar amount for the beautification committee for the tree and a dollar amount for the bench.
Right.
Can I make a recommendation that we contribute toward the total price of the tree? $600 is what I see.
$600?
Yeah.
Ms. Rankin, would you be willing to amend your motion for the amount of $600?
I'll be happy to amend my motion, and along with approving the planting of a tree and the installation of a bench, we'd like to donate $600 towards this effort.
Thank you, Ms. Mullins, Ms. Rankin. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Vote from my left, please.
Yaws, yes.
Evans, yes.
Mullins, yes.
Rankin, yes.
Item 2E, discuss and/or take action to interview applicant for the board... Item 2E, discuss and/or take action to interview applicant for the Board of Adjustments in open session and consider making an appointment. Lana, and I'm going to mess up your last name. Aaron's, would you please come up to the podium, introduce yourself, and tell us a little about yourself and why you'd like to be on our Board of Adjustments?
Hello. I have been a resident of Gunbarrel City for almost 11 years. I'm a Girl Scout troop leader for Troop 704, currently in Gunbarrel. And I saw a message requesting volunteers from the community to serve on the board and thought that I would look into what that is. So that's what I'm here for today.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions, and Ms. Aaron's?
Ms. Aaron's, how long have you been a troop leader with the Scouts?
Six years.
That's something to say right there.
Thank you.
I was with my son's troop for 11 years, and I'm not quite recovered from it yet. So six years, my hat's off to you if I had a hat on.
Thank you very much. I'm also the cookie coordinator, so thank you to everyone who has seen our girls at Walmart and Brickshers and been so kind to speak to them and help them with their business. Appreciate it.
Any further questions?
Since this has to do with planning and zoning, can you give me some thoughts on how you think you might assist our committees, our board, with the planning and zoning?
The only information that I have about what that is is some internet research that the Planning and Zoning Board looks at appeals from people who want to do things that don't necessarily align with the current zoning ordinances. And so they look at it as a case-by-case basis. And how do I contribute to that? Often in my work with Girl Scouts and things like that, I have to make adjustments to meet individual needs that don't necessarily meet the general rules that I've been given. So I think I'm open to listening to different ideas that people have and contributing towards a vote to see if we can serve the needs of Gunbarrel City and its residents and come to agreements together that just serve everybody.
Okay, good answer.
Thank you.
That was a very good explanation of what the board does.
Thank you.
I was going to ask you a question about how would you resolve conflicts, but if you've been with the Girl Scouts for six years and dealing with children that age, you definitely know how to do it.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Any further questions, counsel?
No.
I'll entertain a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to appoint Ms. Aaron's to the Board of Adjustments.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Vote from my left, please.
Yaws, yes.
Evan, yes.
Mullins, yes.
Rankin, yes.
Thank you, Ms. Aaron's. Looking forward to it. You'll get a phone call from the city secretary next day or so to come in, and she'll, her and the city manager will walk you through the...
Wonderful, thank you very much.
Discuss and/or take action regarding additional training on Texas Open Meetings Act for the EDC City Council and staff. May I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to discuss and/or take action regarding additional training on Texas Open Meetings Act for the EDC City Council and staff.
Second?
Second, second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, this is something that... Large misconceptions out there on Open Meetings Act. I've got, I get phone calls, I get comments that are made, and it's on both sides of the fence. Some people are possibly doing things that maybe they shouldn't, but actually, the most errors that I see here are people who are thinking that they can't do things that they can. And I would just like to get this, you know, get us all on the same page again. And I don't have anybody in mind at this... Well, I do have somebody in mind. I haven't been able to reach her to see if she's free to come in, but I believe I can get somebody from TML or from the Attorney General's office to come in and do this at either no cost or very little cost. And that's my goal, is to get somebody that can do that. Absent that, I would probably end up asking the city attorney to come in and do it at his normal rate. So those are the options that I'm looking at at this point in time. Any questions or concerns?
I think that would be a very valuable thing for all of us. Not a day goes by that I don't get an email that's copied to all people discussing things that it shouldn't be, or a question from somebody that they want to discuss an item that they've already discussed with somebody else. I think that would be hugely valuable.
I'd just share with the public, one of the concerns that we have is, following the Texas Open Meetings Act law, it's something that's just drilled into you when you first begin this career at this level. And it's a weighty decision because you have to balance making the right decision with what you communicate and what you can't communicate. Because at the end of the day, we're elected officials that serve you, and we want to make sure that we're doing that the absolute best way we know how. So definitely, I would think this would be a time well spent for our group.
I do, too.
For all the groups.
Any further comments or concerns?
Would we be including the volunteer boards as well, or just the council and staff?
Council, staff, and EDC.
Council, staff, and EDC.
They're the ones who are primarily impacted by this, I think, so.
That'd be a good group.
Pardon?
That'd be a good group.
That'd be a good group, yeah. And it's big enough, or, you know, get much bigger than that, it gets kind of rough, so.
I agree.
Any further questions or concerns? Vote from my left, please.
Yaws, yes.
Evan, yes.
Mullins, yes.
Rankin, yes.
Item number 3A, we have Mr. Ken Foster wants to make a comment.
My name is Kenneth Foster. I live at 410 Bay Court, Gunbarrel City. I'm the current Vice President of the Economic Development Corporation. The EDC Board does not have a vastly differing opinion on what the EDC bylaws should include. The Board voted 6 to 1 to approve the revision of the 2019 EDC bylaws. The document has been reviewed by the EDC Attorney. His review and comments on the proposed 2021 bylaws amendments is the document before you tonight, this evening, for discussion and take action. The EDC Bylaws Committee unanimously supports this document. Any further work undertaken by the EDC Bylaws Committee or the EDC Attorney should come only after the council takes action on the proposed 2021 bylaws revision that is before you. This choice, the choice and burden is yours as elected officials to make. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. Item 3A, discuss and/or take action to direct the Executive Director of the EDC to direct the EDC Board to prepare a comparison document demonstrating the differences between, one, most current council-approved bylaws; two, bylaws recently approved by the EDC Board; and three, bylaws prepared by the Executive Director. May I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make the motion to discuss and/or take action to direct the Executive Director of the EDC to direct the EDC Board to prepare a comparison document demonstrating differences between, number one, the most current council-approved set of bylaws; number two, bylaws recently approved by the EDC Board; and number three, bylaws prepared by the Executive Director.
May I have a second?
Second, second.
A motion and a second. Discussion, Mr. Yaws?
First off, I want to say that my intent behind this request was there's been so much discussion, and I can't stress how much I mean so much discussion, about establishing bylaws for the EDC Board, excuse me, for the EDC. And at this time, we have the existing version that's been in use for the last few years. We have a version that was put out, produced by our EDC Board, and we have another version that was put together by our EDC Executive Director. When this council set out to hire an EDC Director, we looked for specific qualities of an individual that we wanted who would bring the most value to Gunbarrel City and to serve the people here. And economic development is not something that just comes to anybody, and we knew we had to make the right hire and get the right person. As we've continued through this year with COVID, one of the opportunities that's been brought to us is to update those bylaws. And I'm still a little bit new at this, even after two years. And when I saw that there was, number one, need for new, seems reasonable. Number two, there were two different versions of them that seemed like they had a lot in common, but they also differed in some ways. It was my decision to ask, could I please just get a document that compares the three? I wanted to imagine that if I were any one of the people sitting in this room today, or anybody who might read about this online, would probably have questions and want to know what is the fundamental, or what are the fundamental differences between these three documents? Do we even need to change it? Maybe. If we do need to change it, which one should we choose? The version A or version B? So my request was to ask for our EDC Board, since they put so much work into this, and I really appreciate all the work they've put into it, to sit down and put together something that compares all three documents. And again, I was very specific in my request. It doesn't have to be anything tremendously wordy unless somebody just wants to do it that way. I really want an expert to help us as a council best understand what best serves the needs of the community. And unfortunately, I've been told we need to vote, and that's just the last word on the subject. And again, I appreciate the comment, but it doesn't answer my question. So it's my request to put it before the entire council to ask, could we please, as a group, ask our EDC Board and Director to work together? I'm going to say that again, to ask our EDC Board and Director to work together to put together this very simple document to help the community at large, in addition to this council, understand what exactly it is we're trying to accomplish and to maybe come together and submit one set of bylaws that we agree is something that we can all live with. I would really like to see that as an opportunity. And I made a note here to right the ship. I'm picturing from some of the comments today and some of the previous comments that this ship is in some very rough water. And I got to tell you, I don't like rough water. And if I were a member of this community, I would be very troubled by all the rough water. So as an elected official, I'm going to make my stand here and ask, could we please work together to right this ship? And could we start with maybe this one thing of just maybe get the bylaws put together? Give me an document. Show us something that compares. Why is one version better than the other?
Well, may I say something?
Please.
Okay. The EDC law states that it's the Board's responsibility to put together a committee and review the bylaws. They don't have to change anything, but they need to review them every couple of years. And no one else is supposed to be involved, not the Executive Director, not me, you, or the mayor, or nobody. Then they bring them to the council. It's our responsibility to see if they even fit within our guidelines, and they run them by the attorney to make sure they're all legal. But they're following the economic development law. That they're supposed to do that. We're supposed to stay out of it. And then you make your decision to accept them or reject them, and that's as simple as it gets. That's just what I'm saying.
I appreciate your feedback. I do stand by my comments. I would like to see something that compares them so that we can put out the best project, the best work product. At the end of the day, when this council votes and approves this set of bylaws, it's going to be the bylaws that we operate with for the next several years. I just would like it to be the right set of bylaws and that it will take us into the next year and in the next decade.
I have a comment.
Yes, Ms. Rankin?
The set of bylaws that are in our packet tonight were produced by the committee. They have been approved by the attorney, and as I understand, it was the attorney that sent it to them. It was something that they had already spent time on. He went through it, he approved it, and it is in balance with our latest resolution. And so the busy work of doing a word comparison document, it, to me, is just prolonging the inevitable on down the line again. So I would like to ask that you reconsider this because we do have a set tonight that we could amend if we feel it necessary, but it has been adjusted to be symbiotic with that resolution. So I don't see a need to go back to where we were two years ago and compare it because that was a document that had no Executive Director responsibilities included in it. So tonight, this one has that in there. It has the responsibility of the Board. And if we don't like it, then we can edit it and send it back to them. So that would be my recommendation.
Ms. Mullins, do you have any comments?
I think the comparison would be very helpful. It would help us to understand the reason that the committee added things that they added and took away things that they took away. I found some things in the bylaws that didn't make sense to me. Some things in the proposed bylaws that I wouldn't expect to be in a set of bylaws, and I would love to know what their initiative was to include that. I think it'd be very helpful.
Thank you.
So are you wanting to have a workshop again, to go over these again, after you get a red line? I mean, I'm just trying to understand, where are you going to go with this? Where are you going with it?
I don't think we know that.
Because this is, to me, busy work over something we've already done.
Excuse me, you asked a question, let me answer it, please. I don't think we'll know that until we get the document back. Would you agree with that?
I would agree with that.
And then if a workshop's needed, then that's something we call. I will say one thing. The bylaws were written prior to the roles and responsibilities that the council approved for the Board and for the Executive Director. And going through them, I saw conflict of that as well. So I do think that it would give an opportunity for the Board to closely look at their roles and responsibilities and make adjustments so that we don't have to do that when it comes back to council. That's my point there. Any further comment or questions?
Well, my question now is, when we were in executive session, the attorney was sending to the EDC a set of bylaws, and then we received this set of bylaws. It's my understanding we asked for these, and they were written according to what we had in executive session.
I'm not aware of that being factual, Ms. Rankin.
May I ask the Board?
These were written prior to, my point, these were written prior to the roles and responsibilities that this council approved, and the bylaws do not reflect those roles and responsibilities.
Then I would like to ask the EDC Director, are these bylaws tonight, the bylaws that were presented to you by Jeff after our EDC, I mean, after the executive session?
Linda, thank you for the opportunity you've given me to address the bylaws issue.
Well, I just need my question first.
I will answer your question, but it is complicated.
Well, was it after our executive session that these were received?
I don't recall which executive session you're referring to.
The one in which you attended with Jeff Moore?
That was nothing to... Oh, actually, at that point, I wanted to address the bylaws. I believe we got off onto a different subject.
It was actually discussed, and he was to send the bylaws, a set of bylaws, to you, and they were to be presented to the council.
Does anyone else recall that? I'm sorry. Okay. That was how we ended the conversation. As I say, we have been back and forth with all of this discussion. May I give just a little bit of a timeline on the bylaws, Mayor?
Go ahead.
First of all, I wish I had my papers in front of me, but I don't. First of all, when I met in a private meeting with our president at the second month of starting to have trouble with the Board, I asked him to agree to certain things. I am the Director of the Board. It is not the other way around. I asked him to agree pleasantly to a few things. He agreed to them all, one of them he reneged on. That was that I was to update the bylaws, only update. There were a couple of things that needed to be changed, that's all. I did that. They were approved by the attorney. I was ready to submit them to the Board when Mr. Lawrence chose his own committee to write different bylaws. They became onerous. They include standing rules. They even include paperwork. Bylaws are not that. They should be a very brief document. The bylaws I submitted were six pages. The bylaws that Jeff Moore finally whittled down, the 18 pages that the Board had written, got them down to, I think, 13. And then, as I say, it was like, we're spending too much money on this. Then, the next thing... the next thing that happened was they took these bylaws to the board and did not present the bylaws that I had suggested, did not give the board an opportunity to vote on the ones that I had suggested. And yes, they were voted, they were approved 6 to 1. And I will tell you why. Because there is a great deal of intimidation within this board, and a couple of the people just kind of finally give up.
Okay, Ms. Cooper.
That's it.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion on the motion in front of us to direct the executive director to have a comparison document prepared? I'll just wrap up my comment, if I can, Mr. Mayor, to say that there's a quote, and I'm probably butchering it, but the making of laws is a lot like the making of sausage. You don't want to see it. I think this is making the point. This product that we're trying to put together is to govern the EDC for the years coming, the years ahead. And given the amount of discussion tonight, is only making my point even more. I think I could have sat here and said nothing and made the same point.
Thank you.
I just would like to have something that makes it clear so that if I have to explain to constituents why we did what we did, I would like to be able to speak to it with intelligence and show them that I'm doing what they want me to do. And I don't honestly feel like I can do that with any, with any confidence right now.
Thank you very much. Further discussion?
Well, I'll just say it's the board's responsibility to put them together. And it's our responsibility to accept them or reject them. And that's the law.
And I want to add that we've been discussing these bylaws in our meetings and workshops since October. I think it's time to come to a conclusion and get it finished.
Any further discussion? Vote for my left, please.
Y'all's yes.
No. Evans, no.
Mullins, yes.
Rankin, no.
Mayor breaks the tie. Mayor says yes.
Of course.
Mr. Lawrence, one thing I will ask is that the governance committee, which is what this committee was called in the beginning, and now it's been changed to the bylaws committee, include the only voted member in on the bylaws, the governance committee, Ms. Diane Johannes, who wasn't included prior, and that your meetings are held with public notice and minutes on this agenda? Because that is, that is a requirement of the OMA.
That would have to be part of the motion.
Ms. Rankin, that's just the requirement of the Open Meetings Act. I don't think that requires a motion. I've cleared that. I've asked the city attorney that. And that was his response back.
Mayor, could I have a question on that, please? I believe this motion was for the EDC board to put this together. Mr. Lawrence, yes, and the entire EDC board to do it, or for the bylaw committee?
It says board.
Says board, okay. Motion said board, so it would be the board. So yeah, same, but the same rules would apply. All right. Item 3B, discuss and/or take action to consider placing all economic development operations under the management of the Gunbarrel City City Manager, including receiving and preparing monthly financial reports conducted by the City Treasurer. The Economic Development Corporation will become a city department, and its director will be considered a Gunbarrel City Department head. Councilwoman Evans, please.
Well, if anybody's sitting up here and thinks we don't have a problem, we got a problem. We had a problem in 2014 also with EDC and just different things. And at that time, the council approved the city, EDC going under the direction of the city. And it fell through for some reason. I don't know. And I've, in my explanation, we've just got some issues here. We don't have any stability in the EDC, and I'm not blaming anyone. I just think, you know, in 2014, they tried to write, you know, get things right. It didn't work. And we're still in that mode. And we've had three different city managers, which is nothing to you, but I mean, and three executive directors. And we still can't find a balance. And I have an issue with the financials, and they're all okay. It's just the way they're reported. And I think they need to be brought back in house, under the direction of the city. Because every time we get a new director, they go this way, and then this one goes this way. And we don't have any stability over there.
Can I get a motion from you, Ms. Evans?
Discuss and/or take, you want me to read this? Do, you want me to read this out loud? Okay. Discuss and/or take action to consider placing all economic development operations under the management of the Gunbarrel City City Manager, including receiving and preparing monthly financial reports conducted by the City Treasurer. The Economic Development Corporation will become a city department, and its directors will be considered a Gunbarrel City Department head. And since you all went to the people and got the authority to hire and fire the executive director, which we've done that, but we got that approved, and now she can get on city retirement, which that's okay, too. You know, basically, they're more involved with the city now than they've ever been. So I don't know anybody's thoughts, but if you're sitting here thinking, we don't, we got it together, well, we don't. Seven years later, we're still where we were at in 2014. And we did have some good years over there, but it's just been rocky lately.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Any further, any discussion, comments?
I would like to add a discussion item.
We don't yet have a second.
Oh, we don't?
I'm sorry.
She made a motion. Is it not second?
Do you have a second? I'm sorry.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
For my discussion point, I'd like to point out that with the change in executive directors, the change in board members, what we do not have is the sustainability of oversight and responsibility for our financial matters. And so I would propose that our financials for the EDC be brought in house. I'm not asking that it be made a department tonight, but I certainly do support bringing the financial accounting in house so that it's readily available for any review. We have some kind of a sense of what is going through our accounting. And we don't have to depend on an outside CPA, or we don't have to reply, I'm sorry, rely on our treasurer. There's got to be a sense of sustainability throughout the changes that occur with EDC directors and board members.
Well, and that's why I really wanted it to become just a department of the city because I don't worry about any department in this city except the EDC. And you and I, Linda, both have worked under Steve Webster. That was one of the greatest guys I've ever known. And you know how he did. But we lost that. We can't get it back. And you know how it should be ran. I know how it should be ran. But we don't have the authority to go over there and tell them. And I just think, you know, if everybody's working for the same goal as we were back then, you wouldn't have these issues. You're going to have personality conflicts sometime. But this has just gotten out of hand. And I don't, I'm not saying this is the answer. I just know we don't have the answer on board right now. So that's my thoughts. And I know you don't want to give up what you think is your power, but we shouldn't be here for power. We're here for the citizens, and we need to get something done.
Who are you addressing on that? Who are you addressing about power?
Oh, just, you know, people think, you know, power, they're here for themselves, or it's all about me. It's all about the city and the citizens. We should all work together.
Absolutely. Anyone else have any comments before I start?
My thoughts. I would just like to say that by having the same accounting format year after year after year, without it having been changed by different directors, it'll make it much better to have audits and accountability.
Is there any way to provide for the accounting that you're describing under the existing structure that we have?
I believe so. I believe that the money that is currently being spent for a CP out of house could be applied to someone that is a staff member directly under our city manager, but also at reports to the executive director and the board. And that way, there is a, there's oversight by the city, but the city is not managing it because they're in a corporation.
One thing that comes to mind for me that I'm, I still have hesitation on this. We heard our city's audit report glowing comments. Hats off to our city staff, our city manager, our city treasurer specifically, for being great fiduciary, responsible citizens with the, or responsible with the citizens' money. I'm hesitant to want to ask them to jump in to this fray, given that they're already doing such a good job. I wonder why I'm up here some days. I don't know if I want anybody else to have to jump into that. I have a hard time saying that because I know you're right on some level that we need something else, but I don't know if this is the right way to do it. I'm not against it. I just don't know if I'm for it.
Well, if we had someone like Mickey that could, day in and day out, year after year, maintain those records, we wouldn't be fighting over what's going into the accounts and what's being transferred, and has this been approved. It would all be going through one accounting person.
Well, I think I would just leave it to the city, city manager, or whatever. The EDC can pay for a part-time person over here. And the reason I just said the city books is because we need books and reports, just like the city gives us now. Mickey would know how to set it up at least. And that if they want to hire, and the EDC can pay a part-time person to do the financials, because I don't, it wouldn't be a full-time job.
A bookkeeper?
Yeah. I, you know, I'd have to, Mickey or the city manager might know or something. But we're not talking about hiring a full-time person. But we need somebody that knows municipal books, that can get the EDC straightened out. And, you know, they don't, I'm not saying that Gail doesn't know the books, but I've talked to the auditor. And like, our year-end entries has to be posted. And the CPA's not doing that. And Gail doesn't know where they're supposed to be posted. And so things like that are not being, you know, they're not done. And, you know, we can't have that. And that's why I said, bring it to the city. Mickey can set up a system or something. So, and she knows about year-end entries and things like that. And that's why I suggested this.
Okay.
It wouldn't be any more work for Mickey. Well, it would in the.
It would.
If I could, please. Let me address a couple of things. Number one, Ms. Cooper was hired March 15th or 16th? I don't remember which it was. The same day that, due to COVID, I closed the offices. So she, she didn't have the benefit of coming in and working with anyone on anything that she was doing. She just came in and cleaned up the messes that had happened in the past. So let's go back into the past. And some of the things that happened prior to an executive director being here is the EDC board did away with QuickBooks off the computer system. So she's not had that benefit of having any of the QuickBooks, any, any of the history of what it was done when you were doing it, it's been totally wiped out. So there's one, one issue there. I personally agree that I would like to see the financials brought in, and for the admin to be full-time, and approved by the board to be full-time, and then get QuickBooks back online and do the financials in-house. I totally agree with that part of it. As far as moving the EDC under the city manager, there's not a week goes by that I don't hear of the workload of city staff. And as far as, you know, so adding an entire department, especially a department that's the size of the EDC, with the complexities of the EDC, and the complexities of economic development. Mr. Roswell has done an outstanding job of city management, and he's about to get a certification with city management, but that's not, that doesn't relate necessarily to economic development. So I think there's some concerns there for me as well. And then lastly, as far as the city treasurer getting involved, the city treasurer has paid a salary to do city work, not to do EDC work. So I don't want to add more hours. They have a work week that's scheduled for city. And I don't know how we, I don't know how we break away from that. So that, those are my comments. Any further comments before we vote?
I actually, I do. And I agree that the city staff and the city manager do a wonderful job. There's no question there. I hate to burden them with this additional workload. And I hate to mix the two. The EDC is a separate corporation. And I just feel like the mixing of the two would be a struggle for everyone. We just got an email this morning addressing a project that Councilman LaRue is working on, where he had done some outside work in collecting information because the city staff didn't have time to do it. And then he was requesting some enforcement, and we were told that they don't have the, the time to address that because it's a new thing. It's a new ordinance. So I'm concerned that the staff is completely busy with their work now. And I really don't like the mixing of the two. I think that would just be too imprecise. And I, it just makes me uncomfortable, mixing them especially.
Well, it was just a suggestion to try to bring some stability to both sides. I don't know that anyone's got the answer. And I didn't think this would pass, but at least, no one can sit up here and say, well, we don't have issues because we really do.
Ms. Evans, would you be open to a workshop where we maybe discuss this further and look at other options?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
I'd like to address two items that were said. As far as the complexity of our two entities, the city and the EDC, daily Shannon and the city manager have walk-ins that are businesses wanting to expand here, or need information on permits, drainage, et cetera. And they never go to the EDC. I think it's a keen opportunity for the city manager to be on top of some of the things that are going on, and then can bring those to the EDC. So I still am in favor of having the EDC be, report to the city manager. And secondly, last thing, is I had mentioned, the staff, the EDC, the payments they're making currently to the CPA would pay for that new staff member part-time to come in and do the accounting in-house.
Any further discussion? Vote for my left, please.
Y'all's no.
Evans, yes.
Mullins, no.
Rankin, yes.
Mayor breaks the tie, and my vote's no.
Of course.
Item 4A, discuss and/or take action to adopt Resolution Number R 2021-012, recognizing May 9th through the 15th as National Economic Development Week. Resolution Number R 2021-012, Gunbarrel City Resolution for Economic Development Week. Whereas the International Economic Development Council is the largest professional economic development organization dedicated to serving economic developers, and whereas the International Economic Development Council provides leadership and excellence in economic development for communities, members, and partners through conferences, training courses, advisory service, and research, in-depth publications, public policy, advocacy, and initiatives such as the Accredited Economic Development Organization Program and the Certified Economic Development Designation, and whereas economic developers promote economic well-being and quality of life for their communities by creating, retaining, and expanding jobs that facilitate growth, enhance wealth, and provide a stable tax base. And whereas economic developers stimulate and incubate entrepreneurism in order to help establish the next generation of new businesses, which is the hallmark of American economy, and whereas economic developers are engaged in a wide variety of settings, including rural and urban, local, state, provincial, federal governments, public-private partnerships, chambers of commerce, universities, and a variety of other institutions, and whereas economic developers attract and retain high-quality jobs, develop vibrant communities, and improve the quality of life in their regions, and whereas economic developers work in the city of Gunbarrel City within the state of Texas, and now therefore be it resolved that the mayor of the city and city council, the city Gunbarrel City, do hereby recognize May 9th through the 15th, 2021, as National Economic Development Week. May I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to discuss and/or take action to adopt Resolution Number R-2021-012, recognizing May 9th through the 15th as National Economic Development Week.
Have a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Cooper, did you have anything you wanted to say about this? I had your name by the agenda. I'm just asking. I had your name by the agenda. I'm just asking, so.
I just want to say I am very proud to be in Gunbarrel City and being part of the Texas Economic Development Council and International Economic Development Council, representing our little city to these big groups. And I'm very happy that we are considering this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. May, let's see, vote for my left, please.
May I make a comment, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, certainly.
I, I just, again, given what this is, I would like to say thank you to the EDC director and to our board, which should go without saying that the board is all volunteers who give of their time, and that doesn't go unnoticed. It's very much appreciated, all the work that you do. And this seems like a small token, but this is definitely a way to recognize what y'all do for the city and for the citizens. Thank you to all of you.
Any further comment from anyone? All right. Vote for my left, please.
Yaw's yes.
Evan Jess.
Mullins, yes.
Rankin, yes.
Item 4B, discuss and or take action to adopt Resolution Number R 2021-013, approving a new website for the EDC. Resolution Number R 2021-013, a resolution approving the approval of a new website for the Gunbarrel City Economic Development Corporation. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to pull this from the agenda, since it has not been approved by the EDC.
Second.
Discussion?
I'd like to know what the, what the plan is. Obviously, having a web presence is incredibly important in the society that we live in today. I'd like to know more about it.
Ms. Cooper, would you go back to the microphone, please? Has this been approved by the board or not?
Yes, it has. The board tabled virtually everything for the last two meetings, because they didn't want to pay for the funding. But they did approve the website, and that's because technically it was already funded in my marketing budget for the year. It was a unanimous vote, a very enthusiastic vote for the website.
This particular website was not approved at your last meeting?
Yes, it was. This particular website, I'm, I'm sorry. This one was.
At the last meeting is what Ms. Rankin said.
It had already been approved.
It had already been approved.
How was it approved? Was it approved just because it was in the budget?
No, exactly not.
Ms. Cooper, is there a line item in your annual budget for a website?
It was under marketing.
So is there a line item for marketing, which includes a website in your annual budget?
That's right.
Which is over budget.
I'm sorry. Was that budget approved?
Yes.
So does this resolution reference any funding, or is it just approving the website? I think that's where we're.
It's for the particular website, and I'm afraid my board misunderstood. They, after they had approved it, they thought that I had told them the wrong amount. I had not.
So is this a request for funding?
Nope. It's already approved in the budget. It's just a request for the website with Golden Shovel websites.
This particular line item is on memoratorium right now, because it is over budget.
No, this is not over budget. And actually, may I explain that, Mayor?
If you would, just have a seat for just a minute. I need to let Mr. Lawrence have his say. I didn't bring him up. So we'll come back to you in just a moment. Thank you. Mr. Lawrence, you asked to speak on this item?
My name is Joe Lawrence. I live in Gunbarrel City, and I'm the current Economic Development Corporation Board President. I have a few concerns with this item 4B. The EDC board was verbally told that the cost would be $20,000 per year for the first two years and $41,050 per year thereafter. The only supporting documentation presented to the EDC board was the two-page overview that's in your packet. No written pricing was presented. The EDC board was not aware that the 26-page proposal existed that is in your packet, nor did their packet include that proposal. The proposal is dated January 5th, suggesting that this was available in time to include it in the board packet. The proposal includes item 10, Investment Overview. That's page 20, which is item 10, is actually between items seven and nine, yet called item 10 instead of item eight. There's an additional item 10, Expert Team. Perhaps a cut-and-paste error was made. I don't know. Just saw it when you reviewed Yaw's packet. Though confusing, I'm discussing page 20, item 10, Investment Overview. Page 20 seems to indicate that Payment Option B is a two-year contract at $21,500 per year, which would include website development, hosting, copywriting, and gatekeeper service. The highlighted optional services, I'm assuming Ms. Cooper highlighted those. I don't know. Again, I just saw it. The highlighted optional services are ongoing content slash gatekeeper service and website lead generation and tracking. These total to $10,200 per year. Ongoing content is not mentioned in the first two-year contract. In addition, website lead generation and tracking are not included in the first two-year contract price of $21,500. Adding these in would bring the first two years to $2,570 per year or more, depending on individual price of ongoing content. The proposal states after the first two years, the hosting, maintenance, and technical support package, the ongoing content slash gatekeeper service package, and the website lead generation and tracking package would total to $14,350 per year. We do not currently have an approved amended budget item, including all those prices. Once again, I'm concerned that this board was presented an incomplete and possibly inaccurate package, and that pricing may not be correct. I respectfully request this item be removed from council agenda, redefined, and presented to the EDC board with an accurate, detailed, up-to-date proposal for approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Miss, okay, Ms. Cooper? My question to you, Ms. Cooper, is was this item approved in a previous, in a previous meeting? And what details were approved in that meeting?
I very carefully went through with them the exact costs after Diane had presented the entire, it was a presentation. We made a presentation what the website was all about. Then I went through with them very precisely the costs. And now I am going to read to you the contract that Joe Lawrence will be signing, because this has been approved. And here's how it reads. For two years of service, the total is $43,000 to be paid annually for two years at $21,500 a year, which is precisely what I had told you. Client shall pay Golden Shovel half of the annual sum of $10,750 under, upon execution of this agreement, and the other half, the other $10,750, when the website is soft-launched. Now, I also made it very clear that the client shall pay Golden Shovel the sum of $4,150 for ongoing hosting and maintenance with soft-launch anniversary in 2023. Here's the other point, and unfortunately, Mr. Lawrence did not get this from the proposal. In 2023, client shall have the option to continue the gatekeeper service for $6,000 a year with Golden Shovel. If we decide we really like the gatekeeper service, and by the way, this is my third website with Golden Shovel. I know them well. They're very good. If we decide to keep that, then we will pay an additional $6,000. But I have no idea where Mr. Lawrence is getting another $4,000 to instead of making it $10,150, now making it $14,000. This is the contract. Thank you.
Questions from council?
I would like to table this until I know that the EDC board has approved it in total.
There's already a motion to.
I have a motion to pull it from the agenda. But I'll change my motion to table it until the EDC board is reviewed in total.
I have a motion to table in a second, or do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion from council?
What are we currently paying for our web hosting, website? What are we currently paying? What is the EDC currently paying for website annually?
If I'm not mistaken, the big cost on this website is the GIS. Is a big part of that caused?
The board voted several months ago to incorporate GIS planning into our current website. However, our website developer, after promising that he would, and even talking with Brian Beatty at GIS Planning, reneged and decided he wouldn't. So we were stuck with a website that he would not change, would not operate for us. And we are charged $125 an hour for posting agendas and minutes. In addition to the, Robin, is it $100 a month for the hosting? Yeah, in addition to that. And we can do nothing to our website.
And if I were Paul, we paid about $16,000 for the creation of the website. That was before your time, I think.
I think it was more like 18. I read somewhere 17 something.
Okay. Further discussion?
I'd be willing to entertain Ms. Rankin's motion under the, under the guideline, under the, understanding that at some point very soon, I'm sure we'll be hearing about it from the EDC director and the board, what they've worked out as far as discussing this.
Any further discussion? I have a motion to table. Is that correct, Ms. Rankin?
Yes, sir.
Have a motion and a second to table. Vote for my left, please.
Yaw's yes.
Evan Jess.
Mullins, yes.
Rankin, yes.
Item 4C, discuss and or take action to adopt Resolution Number R 2021-014, approving the 2021 revised bylaws of the EDC. Resolution Number R 2021-014, a resolution approving the 2021 revised bylaws of the Gunbarrel City Economic Development Corporation. Since we just had approved the motion for have them to prepare a comparison document, it would make sense to me that we would table this until after that comparison document is, is created and reviewed.
I'd like to make a motion to table that, Mr. Mayor?
Second.
Motion to table till.
Until we hear back from the EDC board with the item that we previously requested and the previous agenda item, and then have chance to review it.
Motion, Mr. Yaw's, and a second for Ms. Evans. Any discussion? Vote for my left, please.
Yaw's yes.
Evan Jess.
Mullins, yes.
Rankin, yes.
I have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned. Thank y'all.